I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Monday, October 7, 2024, at this time. And we'll start with Ms. Galloway leading us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you, sir. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the commissioners and their deliberations, and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. Be with those who have been devastated by Hurricane Helene. Guard their hearts and minds. Give them peace that surpasses all understanding. Bless the work of the relief agencies and those providing emergency assistance. Father, we pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, the beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd take a minute to recognize the elected officials that are with us this morning. Mr. D. Tamiga Jarman is here with us this morning, and Sheriff Chris Thomas is with us as well. Since we're in a new location, do want to let everybody know that the restrooms are right out the door here, to your right, I believe it is. And then, obviously, you know where the exits are from where you come in this morning. New location, but we're very thankful and appreciative of the city of Jacksonville for allowing us to come over and use their facilities this morning. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the Commissioners' meeting. Comments should be limited no more than five minutes and may be on any issue on which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the Agenda. With that being said, we need an adoption of today's agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. The agenda has been adopted. Now, item two, approval of the items on the consent agenda. The motion to adopt the consent agenda. Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. Item three, public comment. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Chairman. We do not have anyone sign up to speak this morning.
All right, so we'll move right into our first public hearing. We have three of those this morning, and we'll go ahead and get started with those. And I believe Carter is here to start the first one for us. Mr. Metcalf.
Good morning, Chairman, County Commissioners. First item for your review this morning is the Boynton rezoning request, P R E Z 2024 number 12. The applicant is Tidewater Associates, and then there is the Weg Mancor LLC. As we look at an overview of the request, the property is split zoned from residential eight manufactured to R A M and highway business, and the proposal is to make the entire property highway business. It is tax map number 1128-49, and it's located off Freedom Way in the White Oak Township. So the actual rezoning area is 1.72 acres of the total 8.84 acre parcel, and the property is currently vacant and cleared. As we look at overview of the services, there's a 10-inch Onwassa water main along Freedom Way. Then there is a 16-inch Onwassa sewer force main that goes up Boynton Place Road, which is adjacent to the subject property. It served by the Hubert Fire District with an I O S A rating of six. The most recent traffic count was from 2022 with a traffic count of 27,500 trips on Freedom Way. Staff estimates the capacity around 49,000. Schools servicing the property are Queens Creek Elementary, Swansboro Middle, and Swansboro High School. Here you can see the subject property outlined in red and cross hashed in black. You can see there the northern portion of the property is that R-8M zoning, while all of the southern portion, and again, that property by Freedom Way, and that blue color is the highway business designation. As we compare the current zoning, it is R-8M, a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and the purpose of this district is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential development, as well as manufactured housing in urbanizing areas of the county that have access to the necessary infrastructure to support development at that scale. Again, the property is partially highway business, but the rezoning area is to go to highway business. So overview of that district is there's no minimum lot size, and is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors, where, again, there's sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure to support such development. As we look at the comprehensive plan, the future land use category is suburban growth. Its intent is to provide for moderate-density residential development and supporting non-residential development on the fringes of our municipalities and their associated urban growth areas. So as we look at a description of it, it's applied to both areas where there was existing suburban development and areas that had sufficient land resources to accommodate additional growth or compatible infill. The purpose of it, again, is to, you know, to include single-family residential development and supporting suburban-scale auto-oriented commercial development. And we clarify that better when we look at the land use development study for suburban growth. So when it's proposed to a residential district, we're looking for single-family developments of four to five dwelling units per acre, or multifamily at eight to 10 dwelling units per acre. And when the request is to non-residential, such as highway business, we want to look at commercial uses that would support neighborhoods in the suburban growth areas, especially those that are typically along arterials or at major intersections. And Freedom Way would be considered a major arterial. Here you can see the future land use map. You can see the red there, or that pink color, is the urban growth category. They're closest towards Jacksonville, and then as you got away from the city, it transitioned there to that suburban growth category. We look at environmental conditions. There are no regulated flood zones and no blue line streams. No wetland delineations have been submitted to staff at this time. The proposal could be considered reasonable due to the subject property being partially zoned highway business, and with the future land use map, as highway business would be an appropriate zoning district to suburban growth when it's located along a major arterial, and it's consistent with the character of the area, supported by our Onslow County Conference of Plan Objectives 6.1, 2, and 3. Could be considered unreasonable depending how Objective 6.1 is viewed. Planning Board met July 11 and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present and spoke on its behalf, and no citizen spoke against it, as well as no military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. Here you can see overview of the property. These aerials are from 2022. We expect some new ones hopefully in the coming year. But the property here is shown forested, but as well as adjacent to the Boynton Place subdivision there. But you can see when we look at the property currently, it is currently cleared. And this view is with behind you being Freedom Way, and there you can see the subject property within the Boynton Place subdivision there to the rear. So it's respectfully requested for the Board of Commissioners to consider P R E Z 2024 number 12 and adopt a statement of consistency, and as well authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Warren.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for rezoning case P R E Z 2024-00012, and we do have one individual that signed up to speak, Mr. Josh Edmonton. And when you come to the podium, if you'll provide your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Josh Edmondson, Tidewater Associates, 1069A Cedar Point Boulevard, Cedar Point, North Carolina, 28584. We did submit this on behalf of the developer. We feel like it's an appropriate rezoning for this area. This will allow the developer to make best use of the property in rezoning it all to highway business, as it's currently split zoned, especially since there is a potential for some multifamily development to go on the property. Having this all zoned highway business would allow us to achieve that goal. I'm here to answer any questions you may have for me, but that's pretty much all we have. We do feel like it's compatible land use with that corridor, so happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our speakers. At this time, we'll close the public hearing, and the item is available for Commissioner comment and decision.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say I want to thank them for cleaning that place up. I mean, I go by there every day, and I can tell you, that was a nasty place. I was watching them take everything down, and I didn't realize there was old houses in there, old trailers back in there. It was a heck of a mess that they had, and I see that Barbara Humphrey's going to go ahead and open up a farm store in that white building right out front. I don't know if anybody knew that, but that's what Barbara Humphrey's fixing to do from Humphrey Farms. But thank you for cleaning that up.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Metcalf, hope you didn't go very far. While you're walking to the podium, I did see Alderman Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach come in the door. We appreciate him stopping by the Government Center. I felt sure to check on it, and he made his way over here to City Hall. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
All right, our second item before the Board is the Rolling Hills Estates rezoning request, P R E Z 2024 number 13. The applicant is Randy Van Peeden, and the owners are the Rolling Hills Estate homeowners. There are quite few, so we have just generalized for the ownership. The request change is for residential 12, excuse me, residential 20. We don't have a 12. Residential 20 to rural agriculture. There are 13 properties in question, and is the entirety of the neighborhood of the Rolling Hills Estates. The location of the neighborhood is off Pony Farm Road in the Jacksonville Township. The rezoning area is 69.75 acres, and the existing use is single-family residential as the neighborhood is entirely developed. Water servicing the area, there's a 6-inch Onwassa water line on Troy Avenue and a 2-inch Onwassa water line along Zaner Drive. The properties are served by individual septic systems, and the fire service for that area is southwest with an I O S A rating of three. Our nearest traffic count we could get was from Blue Creek Road, and it's, again, a little older, with it being from 2018. The trip count was 4,800, with staff estimating the capacity of over 14,000. Schools servicing the neighborhood would be Meadowview Elementary, Southwest Middle School, as well as Southwest High School. Here you can see the properties outlined in that red. Again, it's the entire neighborhood, those 13 properties there, along Troy Avenue and Zaner Drive. Nearby zoning is R A for rural agriculture, R 15, and R-8M. Compare the two districts. Current zoning is residential 20, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate low-density single-family residential development in suburban areas of the county that have access to utility and transportation infrastructure to support development at a suburban scale. This district is further intended to protect residential neighborhoods from the encroachment of incompatible uses. As we look at the proposed zoning district, it's R A, same minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and is to maintain that rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating low-density single-family and limited commercial. We look at the Conference of Plan, category suburban growth, provide for moderate-density residential development and supporting non-residential development at the kind of the fringes of the municipality. And again, its intent is to be primarily for single-family and supporting suburban-scale auto-oriented commercial development. So we compare the two categories. So ideally, we would want single-family residential developments that would be going into the suburban growth category to have a density of four to five dwelling units per acre, or multifamily of eight to 10 dwelling units per acre. And then if it was to non-residential, those commercial uses would support neighborhoods in suburban growth area and be located at our, along our major arterials or at their Here you can see the suburban growth category. It's kind of radiating out from Jacksonville, and then once you kind of get to Fire Tower Road, it switches to that agriculture and forestry designation, and starts to get more rural as you start to head out to that direction of the county, that northwesterly direction. Here you can see the environmental conditions. So there, along the rear of the neighborhood, was the blue line stream known as Blue Creek. There are some regulated flood zones, specifically the A E there along the four rear properties, and then the floodway, though, at least the floodway that is mapped, is certainly further down Blue Creek. Could be centered reasonable and in the public interest due to be consistent with the character of the area and supported by specifically Objective 6.1, Strategies 1, 3, and 5. Objective 6.1 deals with having high-quality residential development. And then it could be considered unreasonable as to not aligning with the future land use map, as rural agriculture would not be an appropriate zoning designation. And again, it depends how the Commissioners want to view Strategies 1 and 2 as it relates to having flexible design standards for residential development. Could be considered reasonable, or excuse me, could be as well reasonable because of Planning Board's recommendation. They met on July 11 and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for the meeting, and two citizens did spoke in favor of the request. None were dissenting. No military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. Here you can see an overview of the neighborhood and all of those lots. Then as we take a closer look, you can see all the lots do have a single-family dwelling on them and are developed at this time. And then as well, here's two different pictures of different properties in the neighborhood. The left side is looking down Troy Avenue towards Zaner, and then this picture on the right is as you're coming in. Within the neighborhood, there are larger estate lots. Several properties do have horses, and you can see that by both pictures. They have the fencing, as well as a few have barns. This concludes the staff presentation. Is respectfully requested for the Board of Commissioners to consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R E Z 2024 number 13, adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Mr. Warren.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing on rezoning case P R E Z 2024-00013, and we do have two individuals that have signed up to speak. The first is Ms. Mandy Daltry.
My name is Manfred Daltry. A lot of you know me as Mandy Daltry, Mister, by the way. That's okay. So I'm actually signed up as the backup talker. We got John, my friend, and wasn't sure if he was going to make it, so I put my name down. So it's sort of like the Supremes, you don't know who the backup singers were, you know? So, but anyway, I'll say just a few words that we appreciate the planning department who's worked with Van and myself to get this process started. It was a big surprise to us. It was changed several years ago without any letter, any notice, or anything else. I talked to Commissioner Price about it, and he said he was aware of that many years ago, and he asked a question, would it change anything? And he was told that it wouldn't. Well, it did. It changed a lot. And one thing it changed was, of course, we all have barns and horses, and on a lighter note, my wife said 45 years ago, if you'll buy me a horse, I'll marry you. I fell for that, and I've been buying horses ever since. But I will tell you that our neighborhoods are not your typical subdivision. They're all five and a half acres or plus, and they're clean and neat, and we have pastures there, and it's just sort of, we have a private road. We maintain the county doesn't maintain the road in Zaner or it's where I have any other. And we were just like, the only mistake the Planning Board made when I, when we started the process, they wanted to change it, but they needed to put the word back in there, change it back to. And I appreciate the County Commissioners' time, and hopefully you'll vote in favor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And our final speaker who signed up this morning is Mr. John Pierce.
John Pierce, 45 Johnson Boulevard. I sure hope the Commissioners find suitable to change this. Got a little girl who works for me in part-time afternoon. She lives out there, and I don't know why, but she might be fond of her neighbors with the horses and the barns, but if you go through there, you will see it's a well-kept community. It's beautiful community, and it's one unusual to have to be a private street, and it's very well-maintained. But I feel like years ago, when we bought the property that was to the west of this and developed a subdivision, Woodbury, at the time we bought it, it was zoned R A. And I requested at that time, we were going through a big zoning change in the county, and I requested that piece of property be zoned R 15. And I can't help but believe, for whatever reason, they looked at their neighbors and zoned that R 20, because initially, when I bought that property, all of us zoned R A in that area. And like I say, the county, Planning Board found it favorable, and working with the staff, and I don't see any reason why not. And it's unusual. Every residence in there signed a petition requesting to get it zoned back, like it was when they bought the property. And they've got a nice set of restrictive covenances, and it works pretty well, and in there, you're permitted to have horses, and the horse barns are permitted within the restrictive covenances. And I'm here to answer any questions that any of the Commissioners may have. Thank you all.
Mr. Pierce.
With that being our last speaker, we'll close the public hearing, and at this time, we'll send the item back to the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question for Mr. Metcalf, if you would. If the, if the density of R A and R 20 are the same, then what makes R A inconsistent with the suburban growth plan?
Both, as you look at it from a density sake, both are inconsistent. So as mentioned earlier in the presentations, when I was first outlining suburban growth, that would be for certainly new development, but there were existing developments that were given the suburban growth category that did not have the density. So rather than, you know, trying to do different spots in different areas, different designations, we try to create a comprehensive overview in terms of the plan. So to answer your question, Commissioner, both are technically inconsistent. R A's, or R 20's a little more appropriate because it's exclusively residential, but both technically would be inconsistent. So necessarily, it's not resulting in changing the map whether this gets approved or denied.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Just know that beautiful neighborhood, there'll be three sisters with horses, if I'm correct, and I can assure you that the neighborhood will be fantastic, because I know how well-kept those, those horses are by, by those families. So with that being said, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Metcalf, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman. So the last item is Section 608.10 text amendment, Z T A 2024 number 3. The applicant is the Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the ordinance that is being proposed to be amended is the subdivision ordinance. So we take an overview of the request. It's to Section 608.10, or the private road standards of the subdivision ordinance. Those standards specifically adhere to when a major subdivision is going to propose the installation of a private road. Within those standards, there are three major criteria that had to be met in order for staff to allow a private road to go through the subdivision process. And those standards were that a subdivision would have to install a significant amenity, i.e., you know, some sort of boat ramp or an amenity center, like a pool, had to be installed. They had to have a creative design feature that would preclude N C D O T from accepting the road. So something unique about the roadway had to be designed from the very beginning, so D O T could not take it as a public road. And you had to have entrance gates. And so the proposal before the Commissioners would to be, those standards would be in the ordinance, but instead of them being required, they would be optional for a developer. This could be considered reasonable in the public interest because Onslow County encourages flexible land planning and development standards. This is one of our objectives, and certainly allowing flexible standards as relates to private roads could lead to there more creation of them. Could be considered unreasonable because we prefer public roads over private roads. Public roads generally have a more stable structure in terms of their maintenance and funding, and so they're certainly preferred, as well also ensures their long-term maintenance. It went before Planning Board at September 5, and Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the request. Planning Board did discuss the item, and several of the Planning Board members were in support of the change. The applicant spoke at the meeting, and no citizens spoke on the request, and no military impacts were presented during the meeting. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed subdivision text amendment of Z T A 2024 number 3, adopt a statement of consistency for the subdivision text amendment, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing on zoning text amendment 2024-00003. We do have one individual that signed up to speak, Mr. Josh Edmondson.
Josh Edmondson, Tidewater Associates, 1069A Cedar Point Boulevard, Cedar Point, North Carolina. So, yeah, we definitely understand that the county regulations do prefer development of public streets, one being maintenance of said streets. However, in our experience, and I will not say that this is not a negative comment towards N C D O T, they're just simply at a point where the more and more roads that come on the system, the harder and harder it gets for them to maintain these roads, especially in some of these smaller subdivisions and even bigger subdivisions. Funding's diminishing, labor's diminishing, and just to handle all these maintenance activities as they come up, over time, is going to continue to get, I believe, continue to get tougher. So we do believe that, and Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, currently for major subdivision plats, there is a maintenance statement that is required to be signed when private streets are proposed and adopted as part of the final plat. But also, too, what this would do is, as part of the H O A documents and restrictive covenant documents, it would make it clear who the maintenance responsibilities will fall upon, and also it would require that H O A to set up a budget to take care of those streets. And again, we think this is a positive thing. I know many subdivisions will still probably require amenities and have private gates and those things. However, it can be a determinant factor in some events. And I will say a couple of things we've ran into lately is that in dealing with public versus private, Onwassa, what Onwassa requires as far as infrastructure placement is different than what N C D O T prefers. So when we're trying to design these subdivision streets to encompass travelways, sidewalks, stormwater infrastructure, water and sewer, it could, it can become difficult in certain situations. And also, lastly, one of a recent comment we received from a subdivision, which may be from here on out a little more enforceable, which we 100% agree with, is just as some of the rural areas in the county start getting developed, and some of the water line sizes are four inches or less in size, you know, you can't get fire hydrants in some of these neighborhoods. And so you may, we may be required to go up to 26-foot wide streets, and D O T will not accept a 20-foot, 6-wide street. So there, again, there are just a few items that we're working through that we feel like this would be a big benefit, you know, for the developer and the citizens. And again, just feel like at this time, maybe those HOAs are better to, better handle, they're able to handle and equip themselves to manage some of these maintenance issues over time with the roads in a more expedient process than, you know, D O T would be. So that's kind of where we're at and why we're proposing this. Would love your support on it. I'd love to answer any questions, any points of clarity you may have on it, and, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
With there being no further speakers, at this time, we'll close the public hearing.
Can I say one more before you close it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say I'm in support, and one thing I don't know that he alluded to, we've built several private streets in the past, and one thing I want to make sure everybody's aware of, you still have got to meet the same DOT requirements for a private street as you do a public street. It's the same requirements. And he's correct. I've got a little subdivision now that you can't have fire hydrants into, and the fire department's saying you've got to build a 26-foot wide street. DOT's not going to accept that 26-foot wide street. So we've got a real dilemma there. So I would encourage you all to look at seriously approving this request. Thank you. You've got any questions? I'll be right here to answer them.
Mr. Warren, we have a gentleman that would like to come to the podium.
I'm going to do like some of these other speakers down here today, just to give you a false address of where I live. I live at 213 Center Street. That's the location for UPS. My name is Richard Butler. I live at 118 Greencrest Circle in Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. And I've heard a lot of words spoke here today. And for a common man like me, it takes me, and I've got all these questions, and I would love to speak to each and every one of you privately about some of the things that were said here today, and have been said in the past, and they will be said in the future, because they do not give you the correct address they live at, and I have to. That's wrong. That gentleman asked for your address, not your business. My business was 213 Center Street, and if you do not know where 213 Center Street is, I lived there for 29 years, working with UPS. I've seen a lot of developments go in this place. And these people have talked about roads and water, restrictions, and underlying efforts to get things done. But I've seen many developments in my 29 years of traveling in this county and other counties, that these developers are not keeping their bargain when they go in and build a development. I will not confront the individual today, but I would like to speak to y'all about this. And not being, I appreciate y'all taking me, because I did not sign up, because this is the first meeting I've been to in a while, as I shared the last time, that I will be attending more in the future. I've had a stroke, and that's kept me down for a while. But I still have deficiencies, but I'm glad God's taking care of me. And what I said here has come from my heart, and we need to look into these people that are claiming that they're keeping up with the process in widening the streets, or putting in a curb, or putting in a sidewalk. They might be putting it in. Two years after they get it, it's tore all up. And then who does it fall on? It falls on the taxpayer to pave that street or put them sidewalks in, and that's wrong. If a developer develops, he needs to make sure that it's right to begin with. When the state has to take it over, they don't have a problem like some of the other people have spoke about, of trying to keep it in process and to keep it going. Again, I appreciate it, and I didn't mean to speak today, but I appreciate y'all letting me speak. Again, my name's Richard Butler. I'm a retired UPS man, and I speak what's on my heart and in my mind, and I'm not afraid to speak to anybody. But now's not the time to embarrass anybody by calling names. But I would love to speak to y'all in private. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Carter, I have a question. What may be the impact on these orphaned roads that nobody wants to take accountability for if we were to pass this particular provision?
The difficulty with that is this provision adheres to any newly constructed roads. So while all of those are existing, there still would need to be some sort of comprehensive system that I know the legislature has formed a subcommittee on that would address all of those road systems. So this necessarily would not address any existing roads. It's just new roads going forward. Certainly, we expect all new private roads to either be maintained in the long term by an HOA, a POA, or a developer or single entity. You know, that is expected for private roads.
Well, does it have any teeth now that forces those private roads to be maintained, whereas in the past, these other roads, like Greystone or other developments, I get these emails from folks, and they want us to do something. We don't build roads. And so is there any teeth that would force these, the people, either the owners or the developers, to provide the paving and the upkeep?
There's no additional regulatory standards in the proposed amendment. There is, as Mr. Edmondson spoke earlier, a statement that says, you know, as the developer, I'm going to maintain the roads until said time. Usually, said time is it gets into the HOA's hands. At that point, it's on them, or it's deeded over collectively to the owners. Now, the difficulty with some subdivisions is that the developer, if they go bankrupt, then at that point, who does maintain the roads? But that would be a legal issue. But at the same time, it's up to HOAs and property owner's associations to have adequate funding set aside to maintain them. And with the increased cost of inflation and those costs of maintaining roads, that has gone up. So that is a situation that we're aware of, but is a complicated problem that I don't know is, you know, certainly, it's not addressed in this amendment.
So once the developer brings it up to a certain standard, then it's the HOA or the property owner's responsibility, basically, is what I'm hearing.
Correct. He would deed it over to them, and in the same way, a developer brings it up to NC DOT standards, gives it over to the state, and the state maintains it at that point. It's just more of a formalized process with the public roads. There's more documentation than the documentation that's done through the private system.
Carter, I think the biggest problem was before we had planning and zoning was where the problem was at. Now, since we have planning and zoning, a lot of things are different, because I know where I live down in Swansboro, the state took our roads over, but it was brought up to the state standard, our subdivision. So that's what helps a whole lot, and we're making the developers now do that. But in the past, like Greystone, I know everybody keeps talking about Greystone, and Royce can tell you a lot about it, too. And so can I, so all the board members up here, probably. But there's Country Club Hills, what are there, 18 of them now?
There's 18 of them.
18 or 19 of them.
That's right.
Under the old no planning and zoning, we had no, actually, there was no teeth in it. So now, I'm seeing a lot of different things, what John was saying, John Pierce is saying the same thing, is that the fact is, things are different now, and we're trying to get things done better.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know of any newer subdivisions that are having issues. It's all the old legacy subdivisions that have road issues. And, you know, since the county took over zoning, we, you know, we're requiring homeowners' associations to maintain retention ponds, their owner property, and their roads. And I appreciate that our ordinance requires some funding mechanism for those roads, but we just have to keep working with state. I mean, Paul and I are both on the Transportation Committee, and we totally agree that DOT doesn't want these roads. They can't afford these roads, and I think they do everything they can to avoid having to take them. So there has to be another means in place to make sure these roads get maintained. And I don't know a better way to do it than the owners' associations taking that responsibility. So I appreciate what we're doing to try to keep anything like this happening in the future. Now, we got to figure out what to do with the old ones that are, the legacy, I call them legacy roads, that we have to figure out how to get fixed. And I hope we can continue to work with our legislature and try to get some funding so that we can do some of that work.
Mr. Commissioner Price's biggest concern was, are we going to do this? We're going to get back to where we were with the old?
Yeah, I think we've done better. We're doing much better than what we did before. I mean, none of us, it was way before our time.
I guess the big question is, if it's left as a private road, and the HOA takes it over, and then the HOA doesn't follow through, and these neighborhoods end up like, some of them are now, where are they at then? Are they in the same boat as those old ones, the legacy ones? And then it's on the HOA? And then are we going to end up with the phone calls, and we're over here, we can't, we don't do roads?
Yeah, I think that's correct, Chairman, just what you said. That's kind of the risk in this, if there is a risk, but there's, the developers are asking for some flexibility, and they're minimizing that risk by our current zoning ordinance is requiring those things, such as HOAs, or developer to be in charge of it. But ultimately, yeah, if it's not the state, then someone else could not follow through with it. And where you get phone calls, I'm sure you get phone calls for a lot of things that you don't have any control over. And that's certainly what would happen here, but it wouldn't fall back on the county.
Right.
It would fall back on those owners.
And the question goes, too, is without the private road, while we're changing the text amendment with this, the current developments that are taking place without this, is the state taking over these developments, or is NC DOT taking over these developments? And if I heard correctly, this is just to speed up the process of repairing if they run into issues?
So currently, you can either go through the public system, and you build it to NC DOT standards, and then petition the state once you've got it certified that it's built properly for the state to take it into maintenance. There's a residency requirement with that, and so there's a lot more standards, a lot more hoops you have to jump through. Or you go through the private standards, which case, those three items before you, the amenity, the design feature, and the gate, you must do all of those. But once the right of ways created, they could deed it over to the HOA at any time. So it just depends, because some developers retain ownership of the HOA until they hit a certain threshold. So it's more of a fluid process, but it is quicker to be able to get it over to the HOA's hands and to get it in its final ownership destination. That is much easier. Simply, the amendment is just lessening the bar to do the private roads in the first place.
That's what my question, the last question was going to be to clarify for all of us, is it just the gate, the private road to the pool, removing that from the text amendment, and it's what it has been typically?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Does that make sense for everybody to?
So let me just, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just, I was going to ask you a question as a Realtor. So does it fall on the Realtors who are selling these properties to communicate adequately that the burden does lie with the new homeowner and the homeowners' association for these roads?
It does, and there's usually a disclosure that goes along at closing that tells people that. And I had a question for the attorney. If the homeowners' association, under this ordinance, is required to maintain the roads and does not do it, is there not legal recourse for the property owners?
Yeah, against the homeowners' association, right? Not against the county, right? The county...
Absolutely, that's what I meant. So they do have a way to get the roads fixed if the HOA doesn't perform under their obligations?
Sure.
Any further discussion, comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Warren, item five.
Yes, sir. And I'll take you home with the final two items. We have two contract amendments for the board's consideration this morning. The first is for the emergency operations center. We're now at a point in the construction of the renovations and expansion to the emergency operations center, where we need to begin incorporating the audio and visual equipment and systems into the project. So we went through the formal process of soliciting bids for this service, and the lowest responsible bid came in at $643,560. And that would also include a 5% fee for construction management services by incorporating that into the contractor's contract. So the total cost would be $675,378. And ARPA funds were set aside at the onset of the project to cover this cost, so no additional funding is necessary. And so what we're asking today is for the board to consider amending the contract for Clint's and Thay's Construction Company by $675,378, to include the additional funding for the emergency operations center's audio/video systems and equipment, and if approved, to authorize the county manager to sign the necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
All right. And so the next is for the multipurpose building. When this, the original design contract was issued to Smith Senate for this facility, at that time, the plan was to basically design half of the building for senior services and the other half of the building to be shell space until a decision was made on who was going to occupy that side of the building. Several months ago, the decision was made to bring the farm service agencies back into the building, the ones that were in there previously. And so we've asked Miss Senate to design that half of the building as well. And so to cover the cost for the additional design work, they've submitted a contract amendment in the amount of $190,400. And so it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval for the proposed amendment to Smith Senate Architectural Contract to include $190,400 in additional funding for design services necessary to complete the overall design and to authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Ben, I have a question. What was the rationale to move the farm service agencies back into the multipurpose building again, because I thought they were working okay? I mean, am I missing something?
Yes, sir. So the discussion was, in looking at where the farm service agencies are right now in the government center, they really don't have the adequate space or facilities to be able to carry out some of the programs that they need to provide to the citizens of the county. And so moving them back into this space, it put them in the same space, and it also gave them room to be able to provide all the necessary functions they do. Right now, the way they're broken up, for instance, with cooperative extension, they're on the first floor of the government center where asset facility management used to be, but they still have equipment stored over at the multipurpose in a storage unit. They try to hold classes in Room 111 and the chambers, and that presents issues with the nature of classes that they hold and things like that. So moving them all back into one location that's set up to accommodate their type of services seemed like the best fit.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think they're very happy with the idea of getting them moved back.
Yeah.
And this building, too, we'll bring some of this to you here soon, but some of the forward-thinking ideas that were incorporated into the design with the teaching kitchen and with some of the other space for our seniors, I think you'll be really impressed with the opportunities we're going to be able to offer the community that we haven't been able to in the past.
Fantastic. All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. No items from the consent agenda. We'll move right over to managers' comments.
All right. And I'll be very brief. First, we'd definitely like to give a shout out to the City of Jacksonville for accommodating us this morning on such short notice. It's great having the partnerships that we have with our other units of government here in the county, and so we definitely thank them for the opportunity to be able to meet here this morning. I know Janelle mentioned in her prayer this morning, the folks that have been affected by Hurricane Helene, and we are certainly keeping them in our thoughts and prayers. But as a unit of government, we're also partnering with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and with statewide emergency management to be able to offer resources and staffing to help them as they continue to go through this recovery process. And over the weeks and months to come, we'll certainly continue to reach out and find ways that we can help them to get back on their feet and to recover from this terrible disaster. And finally, at our next meeting, or prior to our next meeting on October 21, we have our joint session with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board. It was good today, looking at the rezoning hearings, seeing some of the new feedback from the comprehensive plan, and being able to have that in place. So definitely looking forward to both boards being able to get together to talk more about the comprehensive plan and the best way forward. So that's all my comments for this morning, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Commissioner comments, who would like to jump in?
Well, we've got a lot going on. We've got a lot of support that's going up to the western side of the state, citizens of Onslow County. Onslow County is engaged in that effort, and I'm going to let the chairman pick up on the rest of that. But we are engaged, and we are doing things to assist our brothers and sisters that are in need. Got a lot of things going on in Onslow County. We're moving forward. It's not easy at times. It's kind of slow, and everybody knows how impatient that I can be, but I've got to be more patient. I thank the citizens for allowing me to serve, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price?
Appreciate the invite from Sturgeon City to participate in their strategic planning sessions. Enjoyed that. Appreciate what Sturgeon City does for reinforcing those science objectives for those kids in our schools, and so the hands-on activities that they provide are good stuff. So, you know, we appreciate that. Also, appreciate the sheriff for giving us a drone presentation with the company that he's considering working with there, and it was very interesting. And also appreciate the fact he's pursuing some outside sources of funding through various companies that might be willing to buy into this effort too, that's offered some opportunities for emergency services and things along that line as well. In addition, attended the bases breakfast. I want to thank all the businesses in Onslow County that support our public schools. I can't remember the number, but it's a tremendous number of businesses that are supporting Onslow County schools and helping out with that, and so we thank you for all you're doing. Also, want to continue to ask for your prayers for Western North Carolina as well as they continue to recover. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yep, on the topic of the Hurricane Helene relief, I participated in a conference call with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners last Tuesday, and it just was remarkable to me that despite the many horrible things that are going on in our world today, that there is still kindness and generosity and attention for things that really matter the most. There was, I think, 175 individuals across the state that dedicated time to sit there together and show support and, you know, come up with some different ideas for the things that need to be addressed for the next coming weeks and months and really years. I mean, as my pastor was saying yesterday, this is something, this is bigger than anything that we've seen, especially in the state of North Carolina, and it's going to be something we're going to need to address for a long, long time. On the topic, and it just does, it warms my heart a lot, I wish there was a way that we could just jump out there ourselves and get over there and help some more. There are definitely good organizations that you can work with, and I know the NC VOAD is a place that you can go if you're an individual that is looking for a way to participate in that. NCVOAD.org, I believe it is, is a way to find organizations that are vetted that you can offer your services through. And on the topic of volunteerism, Hope for the Warriors, which is an organization that has established themselves over at the OHA Airport in the Military Lounge, is looking for volunteers. And if you're interested in being someone that would like to help our military personnel that comes and goes through the airport, you can go to hopeforthewarriors.org, or you can email Angie@aparker@hopeforthewarriors.org as a way of doing that. And I just want to say, I guess, just to keep communication open with the public and what all we do behind the scenes, because you only see us twice a month, but we have been having some very beneficial and heavy kinds of workshops. We spent four hours last Wednesday talking about all sorts of things that are happening. One of the things that I'm very excited about, because I've always felt that it's important to be addressing the retention efforts that we have within the county for our staff, to keep them happy and keep them here, because turnover is expensive. And we have a group of people that call themselves the Transformers, that are working alongside the leadership in the organization to change the culture. We're really encouraging participation within the Onslow County organization, and I know that means a lot, because when you're invested in something, you have more interest in participating and staying. And so I just really want to say thank you for that focus that y'all are doing. And just have a great week. Thank you so much, we've got great weather ahead of us, and I'm excited about that. No more humidity, well, a little humidity, but less, lower temperatures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got to apologize to Rick Grant for not calling him and telling him that we changed venue. Sorry about that.
We were early at the other place.
But, yeah, I appreciate everything that the county's doing to support our friends in Western North Carolina. I just want to mention that this morning, Onwasso sent a six-man team to the town of Woodfin, North Carolina, in Buncombe County to help restore water and sewer service there. So not only are churches helping and our county helping and everybody pitching in where they can, your Water and Sewer Authority are also pitching in. We got a lot of help after Hurricane Florence from all over the state and the country, and we're trying to give back to those people. So we just keep them in our prayers and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
What I want to do is just thank a lot of people, thank all the people of Onslow County. I know Tim's going to mention a lot of things, but there's some people that seem to think we're not doing enough out there, and we're doing so much. Ms. Whaley's here, I know that all the libraries have been collecting stuff, our employees have been collecting stuff, United Way has been working hard. Chris Thomas is fixing to leave Wednesday with a convoy to go up there. I talked with him on Friday, and it seems like it's really a hard place, where to go. A lot of the places, like we talked about earlier, was Yancey County, and the sheriff there says, I don't have no room for it, we have too much stuff being brought here. And I heard a while ago on my phone that Mitchell County is another county that they don't have no place to stage it. So Chris and I talked this morning, and it looks like what they're going is going to all the churches. It seemed like the churches in those areas are the big help to bring this stuff to them. But I know Tim's going to tell you about it, a lot of stuff was going on, but this county is working very hard to help the people in the west, and I'm praying for them. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. First, I just want to, our thoughts and prayers and well wishes go out to Vice Chairman Robin Knapp. He's not with us this morning, had a medical issue that has got him, he's over in the hospital right now. So if you'll keep your thoughts and prayers with him, he's doing very well. I talked to him two minutes before the meeting started, and he wanted to know all that was going on. I said, here's part of your problem. You need to relax and put things in perspective. So he was still wanting to know what was going on here as he was sitting over there, but he was admitted yesterday, doing great. All his testing is coming back, very positive. They're afraid with the way his blood pressure was, that could have been facing a possible stroke and symptoms with that. So just our well wishes and thoughts and prayers go out to Robin and his family. And he said he'll be back at the next meeting, and I don't think he said this, but I'm sure he was thinking this, to allow him another five minutes of being able to speak at the meeting, so you know that'll be about a 45-minute speech. So I hope Robin was listening, and he's laughing as he's over at OMH this morning. Commissioner Price mentioned bases, and I'll go back, the base has been operating a long time in Onslow County with the school system, started by Dr. Ron Singletary years ago with that, and that's the community taking care of its schools and really putting forth the effort in your own community, taking care of your community services. Rezoning, we've been getting a couple a month. I know that the planning and zoning and Mr. Metcalf is trying not to have so many for us at one time, but what we don't want to happen is we don't want the rezoning request to back up, and people are waiting to do things. So I had that conversation with Mr. Smitherman, and I believe he probably talked to Mr. Metcalf, is that if we need a meeting and we have five rezonings, six, whatever, if we get those on the agenda, we hear those so people can make decisions, because we're not here at the convenience of ourselves, we are here at the convenience of the citizens, so we need to get things on the agenda so our people in the community can get things done. We need to put them on the agenda so they can take that action. So we appreciate Mr. Metcalf leading the charge on getting those to us as quickly as he can. So I think that brings us to what Onslow County is doing. Commissioner Buchanan alluded to it, it kind of bothered me a little bit, heard that there was some talk from some couple of people that Onslow County was just not doing anything. And first, Commissioner Carpenter and I were on that, I don't know if anybody else was on that conference call earlier last week, but she and I were on that. And the state of North Carolina is working diligently to support our people in Western North Carolina. The response from around this state has been incredible to support those communities who need so much with so much devastation and heartbreak that is taking place up there. But it was good to hear of all the things that were taking place. And here the last few days, I've paid a lot of attention to the North Carolina National Guard that has sent several soldiers up to the western part of North Carolina and are making an incredible difference. Once they got boots on the ground, a lot of things, they were just able to support the citizens of those communities to make things happen and take care of them. The biggest word that you can even associate with Western North Carolina is resilient. The people of those communities are proud of their communities, their heritage, they're proud for people to come in and visit their communities and see what the mountains of North Carolina are. And just from the work that's being done and supporting them, that I know that the mountains will continue to call us to visit, and we will do everything we can to ensure that we support their efforts. It wasn't just, it wasn't so long ago that Onslow County faced the devastation of Hurricane Florence and what took place here. That was on a scale that we had not witnessed before. And our neighbors around the state supported us and helped us, helped our schools to really get back on our feet and make things happen. One thing's for sure, if you don't know, state of North Carolina, we don't rely on the federal government, because we know it's the backbone, it's the heritage of North Carolinians that we're not going to wait on you, we're going to step up, we're going to take care of us. And Onslow County, like the other counties in this great state, are coming to support our family and friends in the western part of this state. Before I even talk about what Onslow County has done, let's just talk about what our community has done. I don't have a list of all of them, I just see some pop up on Facebook. I'm not sure what number of truck is headed out this week from Southern Touch Painting. Roger Carroll and Shelby have made sure that trucks have been coming in and out of their parking lot and headed to the western part of the state. They are in connection with a couple of ministries out there that are storing goods, and trucks are rolling just about every day. That's one business and community members. But also saw that the grazing tray in Samantha Privat, along with John Star Zinski and Star Electric, trucks loaded up and headed west. I think Century 21 in Candy Brown Thompson, truck left this morning, another truck will be headed out later on this week. There's an 18-wheeler parked in the parking lot of Lighthouse Baptist Church. Every morning and every afternoon, they're dropping off, filling up. Those trucks will be headed to Western North Carolina. My little church at Antioch, the car is filled to get to Century 21 for their truck leading out later on this week. I just, and I know Commissioner Carpenter's church, Commissioner Price's church, Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Buchanan, Commissioner Bennett, they're all doing their part and more. Onslow County Sheriff, as Commissioner Buchanan said, is going to head out on Wednesday, taking goods to the people of the western part of this state. Our sheriff is going. He already sent a team this morning, if I'm correct. Yesterday, a team from Onslow County Sheriff's Office on scene, helping. A good friend of mine.
One of the things that the sheriff should be on Friday was, and I forget where you said it was, was in Virginia, there was some people with three U-Hauls, three pickup trucks, they couldn't go anywhere because they didn't have any law enforcement escort. They're bringing all their stuff from there to his place to load on the tractor trailer. That just tells you the states are all looking out for.
Yes, everywhere. My son's father-in-law within days was, he's part of the Brunswick County search and rescue. They were on scene, and he's still there, doing everything they can from Brunswick to support. Those are things that are going on from the community. But Onslow County Fire and Rescue, on scene, on scene. Back Swamp Volunteer Fire Department, tanker, fireman, on scene. There's a tanker from Swansboro, on scene. Our 911 dispatch started within 48 hours of taking calls from a county in the western part of the state and directing from here. We have recently picked up, if I make sure I'm correct, that we've also picked up with the emergency services has picked up supporting Madison County EOC. Environmental Health Specialists from Onslow County Health Department have gone. Jacksonville Police Department is, folks on scene, supporting Asheville PD. We talked about the Onslow County Fire and Rescue, the tanker and team coming out of Back Swamp. Onslow County, the North Carolina Agriculture, the Cooperative Extension, I wouldn't have even thought about it, but have sent hay to the western part of the state and supporting Jacksonville Fire Department, Engine Company, on scene. Our shower trailer, you know, you don't think about how much a hot shower means to you till you haven't been able to take one. And our shower trailer is there. All these requests are coming through the web EOC system. It is set up to where we're not getting in the way of each other, that we're able to see what is needed, where it's needed, and when it's needed. And the counties around the state of North Carolina, including Onslow County, are taking those requests and doing everything they can to get what we can to those people to take care of them for the worst situation that they've ever faced in their lives. It's not about advertising what you are doing for someone to pat you on the back, it's we go and do it because it's what's needed. So forgive Onslow County if they're not advertising it on Facebook. Forgive Onslow County if they're not tweeting it on X. Forgive Onslow County if they're not putting it on Instagram. Forgive Onslow County for not advertising what God told us we should be doing, because we do it because it's the right thing to do, not because we need someone to like it, repost it, share it, or advertise it. The people in Western North Carolina, they know what Onslow County is doing, because we know what they did for us. This is a great state. This is a great county. This is a great community that do what is needed without request, because we know what it's like in the aftermath of a major hurricane. So at the end of this day, this morning's meeting, I want everybody to know, not only is Onslow County government doing their part to support, but the citizens of Onslow County, our faith communities, our business communities, are all stepping up to take care of our fellow man. And that's what needs to be known. We're taking care of our own. We're taking care of our own. So we'll close with this. Be the good. That's all we can ever ask for. Be the good, because you never know when you're going to need the support of others and for them to find the good and be the good. Onslow County and our citizens are the good. Motion to adjourn. So moved. We're adjourned.